Move on to conduct of business. I'm A, adopt a resolution initiating property owner notice and protest process as required by Proposition 218 for 2020- 2021 garbage rate increase proposed by Recology of San Bruno. Mr. DiMartini.
Okay. Good evening, Honorable Mayor, members of the City Council. My name is Keith DiMartini, your Finance Director, and I'm just going to provide an overview of this fiscal year's Recology Garbage Rate Review Application before you this evening, as the PowerPoint comes on the screen here. The objective of the presentation this evening is twofold. First, I'll provide an overview of Recology's rate application for fiscal year, the upcoming fiscal year, fiscal year 2021, and describe the review process that was already conducted. And then, before you this evening, is a resolution for your consideration to initiate the property owner notice and protest process following Proposition 218 for the garbage rate increase The agenda for my presentation is on this slide right here. I'll provide a brief overview of the franchise agreement that the City of San Bruno has with Recology, describe the rate adjustment that is being proposed for your consideration, discuss the changes that are being proposed to the residential and the commercial toter rates, also provide some context as to what some of the other rates are in many other cities in San Mateo County. I also have a graph that will show the historical rate changes as a comparison year over year for some additional context as well. Provide an overview of the protest period that will soon come about, as well as the timeline from this date going forward to implement the new rates, describe what is included in the public notice that would go out to all residents and businesses, and then take any questions that you might have this evening. So first, just an overview of the franchise agreement between the City of San Bruno and Recology. That agreement first took effect on July 1st of 1998, and it expires on June 30th of 2024. There were two amendments that were adopted, that were approved by the City Council. Amendment four extended the term to 2019, and then Amendment nine extended the term through the current period ending on June 30th of 2024. The franchise agreement includes a number of terms and conditions related to solid waste collection and composting services and many, many other services provided by Recology. It also stipulates terms for billing and record keeping and fees and the process for the annual rate adjustments. Two different types of rate adjustments are allowed in the franchise agreement. One, which is what's occurring this fiscal year, which is called an interim rate, an interim rate year review, which is primarily based on a Consumer Price Index or a CPI inflationary assumption. And then approximately every third year is a more detailed rate review, which again happens every, every third year. The proposed rate adjustment in fiscal year 2020- 2021 is a 1.62% increase from the current fiscal year's rates. And if approved by council, those rates would take effect on July 1st of 2020. And as I mentioned earlier, the interim rate review process is a more streamlined process and is primarily done on a methodology of CPI indexing. The table here shows the rate comparison from what the current rates are for residential and commercial toter sizes compared to what they will be effective July 1st of 2020 if the rates are in fact approved. A majority of our residential, of the residential customers for Recology have a 32-gallon toter. And you can, as you can see on this table here, the rate will be, the current rate for a 32-gallon toter is $31.42, and it's proposed to be increased to $31.93. So an increase of 51 cents for that toter. And you can see the other rate increases for the other sizes of toters for residential customers, as well as the rate increases for the commercial customers as well. This slide here, I apologize, is a little bit small, but what it does is it lists the current rates for many of the cities in San Mateo County compared to San Bruno's rate, what it's being proposed to for the 32-gallon residential toter. And as you can see here, San Bruno falls just about in the middle, actually slightly below the average of many of these cities in San Mateo County. The rates, you know, they're, it's a factor of multiple things which make up these rates. The mix of residential and commercial customers within a, within a given city is one major factor among others. And as you can see, some of the cities are quite higher than San Bruno's. This graph here, we went back a little over 10 years to, to show what the rate increase has been year over year for the last 10, 11 years. And as you can see, the 1.62% rate increase being proposed for fiscal year 2021 is actually one of the lowest rate increases over that time period. The only one lower was in fiscal year 1112, which is at 1.45%. So just to, again, to provide some context into the rate increase that's being proposed for 2021. So the protest period and the timeline to implement the new rates starts this evening. Again, before council is a resolution to initiate the Prop 218 noticing requirement. If that is adopted, then staff will plan to mail out all of the required notifications to the residential and commercial owners on, by November, by March 27th. And that will be the start of the 40-day protest period. Staff will plan to come back to City Council on May 12th to hold a public hearing to consider any protests, and then also take an action to introduce the new rate ordinance for its first reading. And that would also be the conclusion of the 45-day protest period. And then, on May 26th, staff would plan to come back to City Council to conduct the second reading and then request an action to adopt the new rates. And if adopted, the new rates for fiscal year 2021 would take effect on July 1st. This slide here shows what the actual public notice would look like. That would be an insert that would go out and be mailed to all the customers. In this public notice, it describes what the public hearing schedule is that I just laid out on the prior slide. It describes the protest period, the approval process for the rates, it describes the rate adjustment that is being considered. It also talks about proposed rate increases for garbage, recycling, and organic container types as well. And so with that, the request before you this evening is to adopt a resolution to initiate the property owner notice and the protest process as required by Proposition 218 for fiscal year 2021 garbage rate increase that is being proposed by Recology San Bruno. And that concludes my presentation. I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Did, Kirsten, did you wish to speak, or just in case questions? Okay. We do have a representative from Recology here that also can address any of the council's questions. Linda?
Someone else can go first.
I just saw your mic on this way. Anyone? Marty?
It's kind of like more of a comment, and then I guess I'll follow up with a question. But this is something that the contract allows Recology to do. We have a signed contract there that they are allowed to come forward and request this increase. The consequence of the city saying no to this increase, what are the consequences of that?
If the request was properly made and includes the documentation which it's required to include, I'm going to assume the answer to those two questions are yes, then if the City Council would fail to approve it, then in theory, they would be in breach of contract.
Thank you. So I voted in favor of this contract for it to be extended, and it's on YouTube for people that want to see it. And the issue that I had, and the people who were complaining to me were, why do they always, Recology always gets to get an increase? You know, everything's always going up. And when you sign a contract, these garbage contracts typically allow a rate increase of operations as that contract goes from year to year to year. What I was told when I voted for this contract was, back then, it takes hundred, a couple hundred thousand dollars to bid out a contract with legal, I think it's a total of 400,000. I was looking back at my notes. Right. So at that point, it's a long process, and, and we didn't have the money budgeted to do the study, to look at rebidding it. So at that point, I recall asking, how do we go ahead and budget this money in the case we wanted to do it in the future? So that's, that's my question. I'm going to vote yes to move forward with this because this is the contract I voted for. I take responsibility for that. But it is, if we can get an answer on where, where, where are we now to get to rebid this work and where, where would we get the money to do it?
So the, as council's aware, staff is in the beginning, towards the middle process of our next fiscal year budget development for fiscal year 2021. This is the time with council's direction to consider allocating funds. It would typically be from the general fund, to allocate it to an extensive research, review, RFP development process to develop that. We would do some peer review to see what the cost was for other municipalities that have recently executed franchise agreements with garbage haulers to see the process that they went through and how much that cost. And we would, we would definitely need to bring on some consulting support for expert consultants that, that do this for a living to advise the city on the best way to move forward.
Javon Grogan, if I can add to that. The city would more than likely have to budget over time for that money or front that money from another account. And the city would have the ability with the new contractor, no matter who they are, to build back, pay, a payback of that money through the rate structure and the franchise agreement. And so while you do have to front it initially, you can plan for that to be built in to pay the city back for that cost through whatever franchise agreement you strike and that rate structure. The other thing that's worth mentioning is we sit here in 2020 with the contract expiring in 2024. So should the City Council want to do that to, really for prudent planning, that's about a 24-month project. And so we would really want to make sure that we have money, not in this budget for the 2021 year, but for the 2122 year. So a year away from now, make sure we have money in that budget to begin the process. So we essentially have a year for the RFP review selection process, and if there is a transition, we have a year before the contract expires to have that transition process take place. So we need to budget 24 months for the real work to, to occur should the City Council want to do that.
Thank you. And I'm looking at my notes from that meeting. It was a total of 400,000 dollars more was the estimate to do this. And just because you rebid your services, it doesn't mean you get a lower rate. Daly City and Half Moon Bay did, and they wound up with a higher contract base. So this has never been a personal thing with, with Recology. They provide excellent service at a fair rate based on where we're, where we're sitting. And I, and I can share something with you today. Friday is garbage day at my house, and I was a little slow on bringing my, not the recycled, the green can, it was in the backyard, right? So I come out in pajamas, right? This is the truth, it's on video somewhere. And I, I pull up and the driver pulls up to me and he goes, this is supposed to be done on Friday night. But nonetheless, he did the other side of the street. And so he kind of walked over and made me feel really bad and kind of got my can and went over there. And I said, I was really, really sorry. Normally, it's out on Friday, but I, I have no problem with the service. And I know there's a number of residents that work here in San Bruno, and Recology has been a good partner, but to satisfy those that question, are we getting the best deal? We, we have to always look. And, and looking forward to how we manage that, here we are in a budget crisis. Are we going to spend hundreds of thousands of dollars to potentially get what? But we have time to look this over. We're not going to have the money in this budget because this budget is going to be super tight without having to look over at my city manager right now. I already know that. We all know that. Anybody who's paying attention knows that we're in a tough time right now. So I just wanted to express that, and I am voting yes on this, and, and we'll listen to the public. And it's, it's probably not going to work because you need too much, too many people to override it, and then we have a contract that we have to fulfill. So I'll stop there. Thank you.
Thank you, Marty. Anyone else? Linda? Nobody else? Okay. I, I don't believe there's any speaker cards, correct? Is there anybody here? Okay. Okay. Anybody here? Jennifer, if you would come on up, and anybody else who is here who'd like to speak on this, please?
I apologize, I didn't know where the speaker cards were. It's been a while since I've addressed the council.
And they're way up here this time, so no worries.
Well, I didn't want to block the cameras. Good evening, members of, council members and member city staff and the public who's here tonight. Jennifer Blanco, 230, Tulare Drive. My concern with the insert is I just am hoping that it will come in not only in English, but in multiple languages, just so that information gets out there and that for our residents that are not fluent in English, that we'll be able to understand what's going on with the increase of rates. So, thank you.
I know in our staff report, there is something on one of the pages, but that's, that's in regards to a giveaway of compost. But to the question that's been asked, is there an answer, or do we know?
We can look into doing the insert into multiple languages. So English and Spanish is what we would typically do, and it will be an insert in the Recology bill, and we can talk to Recology about doing that.
Thank you. Anybody else in the public?
I'm just wondering where and when there would be an option for a 16-gallon bin?
Hi, good evening. We adopted the 20-gallon bin several, several years back. As you know, it's an insert to the 32-gallon bin. If that is something that the council would want to entertain into the future, we could all, we would also, of course, entertain that option. But right now, the 20-gallon is the smallest option geared towards really small families and senior citizens.
And what would be the process for entertaining that?
So during the contract period, if that was a desire of the City Council, you could direct the city manager to approach Recology and look into obtaining a lower toter size or report back to you with information on how the acceptance of the 20-gallon toter
Yeah, I guess I would just comment that I, I mean, well, let me ask another question. What is the average timeframe for a contract like this?
Average timeframe as in average length of a contract?
Mm-hmm. Contract term.
Contract term. Typically, minimum of five years. Given all of the capital infrastructure that goes into garbage service, when you hire a new vendor, they may have to make a significant capital investment in trucks, equipment personnel, minimum of five years and likely with extensions built into the contract. It's a very, very significant turnover undertaking, and sometimes in cities, it even involves changing out all of the toters throughout the entire city because your operator, your next operator may come in with trucks that don't match the existing toters. And so there, there are multi-year agreements just given the level of capital investment. And so that's why I think it's not uncommon where you see garbage vendors that have been in place for 10, 20 years or more, just because of the level of capital investment, not to mention running the transfer stations as well.
And Recology, if I may ask, in San Mateo County, what's your average length of contract?
I believe that the Recology San Mateo, which is the largest one on the peninsula, aside from San Francisco, they just negotiated 15-year contracts.
Okay. So my, my concern is I think 25 years is a really long time to not have a competitive bidding process. And, and I have been very happy with Recology as a service. It's not a, it's not personal, just I believe that that's why you have procurement and government is to open up competitive bidding. And so it just seems like a very long time. There's, the contract wasn't attached to the staff report, so I haven't read it. I'm not completely clear on all the terms. And this Prop 218 is concerning because it's actually, I would say, nearly impossible to get 50% of the population to handwrite or to type in a letter protesting the increase. So I think it's just completely unreasonable. So that's my comment. But thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Michael?
So I'm wondering if, without doing a detailed, full-blown repricing of the contract, is there some lightweight analysis that we could do that gives us at least a, and I know that I've, I was on the subcommittee before when we looked at detailed year, and there is a lot of information that's available about the operations. And after having gone through a few of those meetings, I felt a lot more comfortable in understanding the, the size of the contract, basically what it costs and, you know, what we're getting for that amount of money. So I'm wondering if it would satisfy some of the other council members if we at least had some, some report that kind of breaks down what it is, you know, why it is that we pay what we pay, what the overall cost is. And I, I think the changes have been fairly modest over the years. And I, I know it is hard. This, this, every time this topic comes up, it's very unpopular, and we do get a flood of emails, we get a flood of cards that come in, and the letters come in. And, you know, I, it would be nice if we had something where we could at least provide information back to the public about why, why it is that we, that we approve it year after year. The, the bar for the protest is high, and I think it's appropriately high. But it is our purview here. We could, we could reject it, and we can say, no, we're not going to do it. We'll just take it out of the general fund, and we'll pay for it ourselves. But I know we can't afford to do that either. So I'll, you know, gladly pay the 50 cents a month myself and know that it, it's an appropriate charge. But it, it would be nice if we had more information that we could provide to the public so that they know that we have done our due diligence and we're not just writing blank checks.
Sure, sure. If I can, Councilmember Salazar, I think a couple of points. Absolutely. This, I want to remind council, is an interim rate year adjustment. And so every three years is a major rate adjustment year. And if you recall, last year, we hired an outside firm to do a detailed review of the operations, and, and we got a report and a lot of data that really talked about Recology's operations and some of the major cost drivers. And last year, one of the major cost drivers for that increase was the recycling industry and actually China stopping taking a lot of recycling. And so we talked a lot about the, the goal of going to zero waste and actually what it costs to collect and transport and dispose of those recycling products where it's actually not always, or it, it costs money to really undertake that, that exercise. And then, in addition, in the staff report that you have before you, it shows a benchmarking comparison of all of the city disposal rates for the 32-gallon toter in all of San Mateo County. And what that data shows is of the 18 cities, the monthly rate in San Bruno is the eighth lowest. And actually, the San Bruno rate, even with the increase, is 5% lower than the average. And so just there as a sort of quick benchmarking of what all the surrounding communities are paying in the county, San Bruno is on the lower side and 5% lower than the average. And so we did want to provide that data in the report for council, even though this is an interim rate year.
Thank you. For me also, I think it's important, and I know, first, on Prop 218, that is what has been set by the state, not by the city. So we don't have the luxury to say, let's lower that threshold. It is high, there's no doubt about it. The other thing, too, is a lot of times when we have folks that call in that have protest letters, I've asked that Recology reach out to them to let them know that there is an option from the 32 to the 20. And that's at least seven, $7.10 of a difference of a savings if folks have, have recycled more. And I do know Recology in the past, I remember giving, they gave a report that they changed the landfill of where they went because it was going to be less expensive. I, I think Millbrae, if my memory is correct, their garbage cans are different than ours, and they're kind of two-tiered on two sides. So then, if we were to go to another service, we would probably have to equip different trucks. So there is that capital. And Marty, we, we spell our names, our last names the same, and the same thing happened to me Friday, too. So I had to run out there because I was a little behind. But they were gracious and took care of it, same situation. The other thing is, is that we're fortunate that when we do the detail, and when we, when the city manager said, when we did go out and have it examined, the rate that was initially offered actually was decreased a little. So it is about checks and balances, it is about having that detailed operation and, and having that looked into. So with that said, I think it is important because this is one thing, people are going to complain about utilities, period, and I understand why. Water and sewer, they come up only so often here, but garbage seems to come up every year, and of course, anybody would say, here we go again. So I think any information that we can have and directions we can give, I think would be helpful to the council. Laura?
Kirsten, can you come back up? I just wanted to touch on the recycling piece, so I kind of wanted to get an update to find out how our customers are doing with recycling. I mean, one of the things we heard last year was that there's a lot of garbage going into recycling. And so I know you guys had a campaign and just sort of wanted to hear how that, that program's going.
Glad you asked me. So we have been, as you know, a couple of years back, when this whole thing really started, is we did start using our cart hangers for the contamination in the carts. And where we take our recycling currently, our processor, we were getting a lot of contaminated loads. Those contaminated loads cost more money. And, and the trickle effect is, as you know, goes, ends up back in the resident's hands. So we put this program into place to clean up the recycling. And I can tell you that out of, in the month of January, we probably had one load that didn't, wasn't up to par. So we're doing, the residents here are doing an extremely good job of reading the pamphlets, reading the inserts that we're sending. We put a little blurb into the city manager's last newsletter. They're, they must be reading it, they're using the cart, they're calling, they're asking the questions, and they're turning it around. So the residents are really doing a good job.
Excellent. Good report. The other question I had was, can you explain a little bit more about the recycling and selling that to China? Because I guess China, they, they no longer buy US plastic, is that what it is? Or did they, or cutting back? And I know that increased cost because now you can't sell the plastic. So can you talk a little bit about that?
So the first problem that China put forth was that a lot of garbage was being contaminated into the bales that we were sending to China. So China pretty much has said, we don't want any recycling from the United States. So they've very, they've limited where, we used to be able to tell people they can put plastics one through seven in their recycling. Now it's simply rigid plastics, which is, you know, a laundry container, milk container, the very basics. So now where we take, are all the processors in the United States are looking elsewhere outside of China. So they're going everywhere. We no longer get revenue for the recycling. Nobody does. They're all paying to have it processed. So currently, you know, we're, we're in a contract with our processor, and right now we're getting a really good rate, so we're keeping an eye on that and constantly looking for different. for different avenues where we can take our recycling.
Thank you very much. So those are some important things because I think that also drives our cost and it drives ultimately you and I as residents, all paying for that. I just want to thank also for Recology for the work that you do in the community and the support and, you know, they're always willing to help out and support and it's great to see your volunteer, your bins out there and the free service that you provide and, as well as picking up garbage when people forget. And as a reminder, everybody gets the two bins a year as well for free additional pickups.
Yeah. So I'm glad you reminded everyone of that. And I also want to remind everyone of the free compost giveaway that will be the, right after Earth Day, the April 25th, over at Beckner Shelter, we're going to give away compost. We'll also have some small bags of compost at Operation Clean Sweep this year for the first Saturday in May. And we had, I thought I had, we had another event coming up, but escapes me when nerves get to the podium, so I can't remember what it is. But definitely check our website for any updates to different events that are going on. So we look forward to seeing everyone at those events.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Any other questions, comments?
I don't know, go ahead, make.
Michael and then Lynda.
I wanted to clarify something I said earlier because it may have been a little abrupt, but when I said that, that I felt that the, the bar was set appropriately high. Really that thinking comes from the fact that I believe this, our, our ability to set these rates is in the California Health and Safety Code. Is that correct, Mark? That's where we get that. And if, if that bar were set too low and the public could override any decision we make, it would completely impact our ability to provide crucial, necessary services to the city. And so that's why I said, what I said, that we don't want to make that bar so low that any, you know, public outcry could limit our ability to, to pay for these services. And these services are paid for by the ratepayers and we really wouldn't have another, another way to fund those. So I just wanted to make that clarification. Thank you.
Lynda?
Yes, I just want to clarify that the title that was noticed for tonight is Resolution Initiating Property Owner Notice and Protest Process as Required by Prop 218 for Fiscal Year 2020, 2021 Garbage Rate Increase Proposed by Recology San Bruno. But in the actual body of the resolution, we're actually also approving the increase. Is that, is that right? I want to make sure that we're, it seems like we're actually taking two, two separate actions. One is initiating the proper, the property owner notice and protest process, but there's no mention in the title that we're actually approving the rate increase.
Yeah, this is just a notice.
That's correct. What you're doing is in order to provide notice to the residents, you have to be able to tell them what the proposed increase is. And that increase would be implemented only in the absence of a majority protest and then action by the city council.
So tonight, or for clarity, are we approving the rate increase tonight?
No.
No.
Okay.
Just the noticing.
Thank you. And then I also just wanted to ask, will, will we be approving this at a later time after the process, after the notice and the public process?
It'll be back on the agenda for city council consideration as part of the public hearing on the, the majority protest.
Okay. And so then at that point, I'm wondering if, based on your earlier comment, non-approval is a breach of contract? Why is it coming to us to make a decision at all? Should, wouldn't that have been already approved as part of the original contract when the council approved the contract?
No, because the proposed rate increase, turns out maybe staff would do some review of it and it might result in a, in a lower amount, for example. So what the notice does is it sets the, the highest rate that the city council can approve, which in this case is 1.62%. But it's possible that the city council could say, well, we'll approve a lower rate and find some other way, or there was a mistake in the calculation. So the council does retain the discretion to set a lower rate if, if that's shown to be appropriate. But if it turns out that it's insufficient to meet the revenue needs, then in theory there could be a breach of contract.
Thank you. So does that mean then, is tonight the night to ask for a lower amount?
Well, I think council members can ask, ask for that at any time. You could certainly do so this evening or wait until the, the protest period is over and see how many protests there are at the, at the second meeting when it comes back.
So I'm sorry, I'm going to call Recology back up. How, how, this is my, my first time approving or not approving this, so I have a lot of questions. How are these set? How does Recology determine that a city five miles over should be less expensive or more expensive than, than our city?
I mean, I know the base rates were set when the franchise agreement was put into place, so capital, overhead, all those determinations were, were put together when the franchise agreement began. And then we've been basing everything off those base rates. So CPI, obviously in interim rate years is, is a given, it's 80%, I believe, of CPI. And then the detailed rate years, Keith could probably speak better to that, it's a little bit more financial, how we go back and look at revenues and expenses.
Thank you.
Thank you, Kirsten. So just to add on the detailed rate year, last year we conducted a very thorough detailed rate review and as the city manager indicated, we brought on the services of an outside consulting firm that has a significant amount of expertise in that field. And through the work of the consulting firm and the collaboration with Recology, we revised some of the methodologies that were used in the detailed rate review application. We reviewed a substantial amount of financial data, all their profit and loss statement information, all of their, their capital expenditures, all of their operating expenditures, their hauling costs, all their salaries, non-salary expenditures, a significant amount of information, also compared it to other municipalities across, across the county as well. And we determined with that the rate actually should be approximately 1% lower than the original application that was submitted to the city from Recology.
And that was this, for this year?
That was last year's detailed rate review process, that's correct. And as you can see from the, the sort of 10, 11-year trend that, that we had showed earlier, that it's typical that the detailed rate review, rate increase is higher than the, the other interim rate reviews. So the, what is stipulated in the franchise agreement is that the interim rate review is 80% of what the CPI sort of methodology is. And that typically has resulted in a far lower annual rate increase than what actually occurs during the detailed rate reviews. So the detailed rate review tends to be a little bit higher because it's a much more robust review of actual expenditure trends that Recology faces.
Okay. Thank you. Okay, thank you.
Okay. With no other questions or comments from council, this is a resolution. Any action by council?
I move we approve the resolution.
I'll second that.
Roll call, please.
Vice Mayor Salazar?
Aye.
Councilmember Davis?
Aye.
Councilmember Mason?
No.
Councilmember Medina?
Aye.
Mayor Medina?
Aye.